I probably don't want to, right? We'll go ahead anyway. Now Scott, floor is yours Ed, to open the, get this going.
Great, thank you. Jamie, your, on recording. Jamie, I am getting an echo on my end, so I don't know if you've got too many channels going.
This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening. This is the virtual Board of Selectment meeting for Monday, July 20th. As indicated on tonight's agenda and currently on channel 18, we will be inviting people for public comment. To get in line to speak, you must send an email to comment@town.harwich.ma.us. If you wish to speak on a particular agenda item, please indicate so in your email. At this point, Mr. Chairman, I do have a couple of people in line for the public hearings, and the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Scott. We called together, are in open, a Board of Selectments meeting for July 20th, 2020. We then went into executive session. We discussed two items in executive session. The first one regarded the collective bargaining for the Harwich Employees Association and Highways Maintenance Employee Association. And which we, will carry this discussion probably forward for a couple more meetings. Secondly, we discussed the strategy sessions with contract negotiations for non-union personnel, namely the Finance Director, the Fire Chief designate, and the Police Chief. We then adjourned from the executive session and moved back to open, our open meeting for tonight. And with that, I'd ask you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll next go to Weekly Briefing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have nothing specific for COVID-19, so I'll hand it directly over to our Public Health Director, Megan Eldridge.
Hello, Megan.
Hi Larry, hi guys. I have a few updates. Hi, I have a few updates for you. The first one, I wanted to let you all know, and the, and the public as well, that the Board of Health is having a meeting tomorrow night at 6:30 virtually, and they'll be discussing an emergency order to mandate the use of masks or face coverings on Route 28 in Harwich Port from Bank Street to Lower County. We have many, many complaints, mostly in that area of the public not wearing facial coverings when they should be, and that's when they're walking past people on the sidewalk. It's, it's a narrow sidewalk in areas, and it's hard to social distance all the time. So they are looking to enact an emergency order tomorrow night, which would put in place a mandatory mask zone between Lower County Road and Bank Street. It doesn't mean that masks or facial coverings aren't required everywhere else in town when you can't social distance, but at least in this small section of town, which tends to be the most busiest with walking and pedestrian traffic. We are hoping that this will help slow the spread because we have had five new cases just since Friday. It's been two weeks since the 4th of July, and we were hoping not to see this, but of course, people got together and weren't exactly social distancing over the holiday weekend. And it has resulted in an uptick in the number of positive confirmed cases of COVID, not only in Harwich, but across the Cape. So five new cases since Friday, and seven of the now 136 cases total, we have seven that are currently active and in isolation. Also, this has impacted several businesses in town, and not just in Harwich. Again, our neighboring towns have had some businesses need to close for 24 hours after some employees have also tested positive. I can say that any business that has been impacted has immediately contacted the Board of Health and gone through the proper steps to stay safe as well as get their employees tested, that need to get tested. And everybody's doing the right thing. And if the public needed to know about something, we would absolutely tell the public the date, time, and place of a, of a, the specific facility. Some of them not, aren't always restaurants. We've had some other retail-type businesses that have also been impacted. I just want to reiterate the same message that I gave back in April or March when we were concerned about people in the grocery stores being positive. We need to continue to assume that everyone is positive and maintain your social distance. Keep your masks on when you need to. It is safe to go to a restaurant. Usually, it's not the patrons that are affected as much as the coworkers that are impacted by a positive coworker. They tend to gather at the wait stations and things like that, and sometimes the close contact there can be an issue. But a patron sitting at a table six feet away from others, and their wait, wait staff coming up, wearing their mask, a patron of a restaurant would not be considered a close contact of a positive wait staff. And I just want to make sure people understand that if there is a positive at a restaurant, the public should remain safe because all of our restaurants seem to be following the social distance and mask rules as, as far as we can tell. But it's just a good reminder that social distancing works, and when you don't social distance and you, and you gather with other people in close proximity and you're not outside, this virus does infect others pretty easily if you're, if you're inside and, and gathering with other people. On that same line, it's important to answer the phone if you see someone from the Visiting Nurse Association or a phone number that comes up as Mass COVID Team. That means that you are a close contact of someone who has tested positive. And being a close contact, you need to quarantine, but also you need to make sure that you don't have symptoms and get tested if need be. But that's what slows the spread or stops the spread, is if we can catch those close contacts before they become sick and then go ahead and infect other people. And lastly, we have been one week now in with our COVID Compliance Inspector from the county, and he has visited over a dozen businesses in Harwich, and they're all complaint-driven, so he's not just randomly going places yet. I'm hoping that is the case eventually when the complaints slow down. But he is complaint-driven, and so far, he's been met with little resistance, and owners and operators have been respectful and responsive to his requests. We do continue to get daily complaints about mask-wearing. And it's, it's something that everybody needs to be mindful of when you're in and around businesses. They, they're trying to do the right thing and require their patrons to wear, to wear the masks. If it's a business that's not complying, that's when we can get involved and look to the business for stepping up on their safety standards. That's my, that's my COVID update.
Thank you, Megan. Questions for Megan, comments? Megan, I, I did note on your monthly report, you mentioned the training video and the manual. How's that been received, especially the training manual?
So far, I've gotten over 150 signed forms from employees. I'll be getting together with Joe at some point to see who's missing out of that pile, but people have said it, it's easy to understand and easy to, to watch and listen to, and I haven't gotten any complaints about it, so I'm, I'm hoping people are able to get a little, little bit of information from it.
Okay. I would appreciate it more positive rather than didn't get any complaints, but we'll, we'll go with that. And you also mentioned the contributions of Kate and Jen, and, and of course yourself, we want to applaud that as well. It's been a great effort. Any other comments?
Thank you. Yes, my, my staff has been amazing.
Thank you, Megan. Joe, do you have more on?
No, next I would turn it over to our Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening all. I'm gonna kind of dovetail with what Megan has been explaining. Usually, I'm the bright light of the bunch, but I think I'm gonna be a little less bright tonight, unfortunately. Our businesses are forging ahead. They're doing all that they can. I want to start by thanking Megan, Joe, and the town for the way we did reopen. The guidelines and the guidance that support our businesses and the town. We are a very strong community and family, and we look forward to all of our businesses being successful. Many of these businesses were closed for months, and they have recently reopened and have had to change how they do business. Masks, social distancing, and it's not the warm and fuzzy feeling everyone used to be, used to be following. These safety standards and protocols are out of respect for their staff, customers, and guests. It's safety first. What I have seen recently on social media and heard regarding the way many of them are being treated is somewhat sad, because they are doing what is in the best interest of the community's safety. I'd like to ask everyone to please take a deep breath. We all want everyone to enjoy your favorite restaurant, shop, gallery, et cetera. But please know, the owners and staff are showing the utmost caring for your safety, and this is new for everyone. I am so very proud of our businesses in our town, and I hope we can all follow the guidance and guidelines that we are all working with. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Cindy. We certainly all agree with that. It's just hopefully everyone's respectful and helping you. We all, we're all in this together. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Moving on then to public comment. I, I have a couple. One item is Dave Nixon reminded me that we have a CPC meeting, a hearing, public hearing on August 20th, starting at 6:00 PM. And Joe, as you reminded us, that will be for the fiscal year 2022. Time flies because CPA is now done, you know, putting in their warrant articles this year. But that will be for everyone that, that's interested in receiving CPC funds to make, I think, their initial case for that. It'll be on the web, and so as we get closer, you can go to the website to, to get login information to join that meeting. My second comment is just to state what a great ceremony we had on Saturday with the change of command, with the departure of Chief Clark and the arrival of Chief, Chief LeBlanc. And I'm always impressed by the number of people that show up for those, not only in our town, but across the Cape and across, in some cases, Massachusetts. And so it was a, the only downside was, it was extremely hot, it seemed to me, but we had no control over that. And my, just, again, for all of us, our congratulations to a great career that Norm had, 43 years here. And the, I think Dave is looking at 26, something like that, so we'll see him here to also create a, a great career and put his imprint on the, on the Fire Department. And Ed?
Yeah, it was also a very nice event on Friday. Sort of a final coffee hour for the chief with many, I think most of the department there, and many other folks from around town employment, and quite a number of folks from neighboring departments stopped by to say, say their farewell to Chief Clark. And it ended with a double line of firefighters saluting him out as he walked out of the building and mounted up on the old Alben, Harwich Fire Rig. And it sputtered off with a line of equipment in front of him and behind him to take him home. It was quite, quite a good event.
Don?
Just, and not to leave anyone out, on Saturday, there were a significant number of people who stepped up from probation to be promoted to Lieutenant, to be promoted Deputy Fire Chief. I mean, so congratulations to the department itself. It really, it's a testament to whoever's been the chief that we have people ready to move up.
Thank you, Don. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as follows. Vote to approve annual auto repair renewal 2020 for all out performance. DBA Joseph Lang, 266 Queen Anne Road, Harwich.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that's passed, Joe, and we'll move on then to, new business is discussion of draft questions for the town administrators applicant. What I sent earlier was some questions that I put together. Michael responded to that, and I put together some of a composite between what Michael had sent me and some of my questions. Not to speak for you, Michael, but I think directionally, we're thinking along the same lines. My, so I said to the emailer, Michael, my only, my training has been that you're better off asking people what they've done in the past, examples, because you can say what you want about what you're going to do in the future, so. But we're getting at the same point. Now, after that, today, I had got an email from Don, and then tonight, I got some questions from Ed. And so, not sure how you want to proceed on that. We could, I was hoping to keep the questions around five, maybe, certainly 10 at the most, because that's a long series of questions. But I'll take any suggestions on what you want to do.
Can we blend, Larry, can, can we blend those together some way? I, I mean, I was pretty happy with the format and questions you had suggested, but in order to reflect the other members, is there a way to blend some of those in and keep the number to a reasonable, workable number of questions, or?
If, depends on how much authority you give me. If you're comfortable with a composite that I've put together between Michael and I, and I haven't asked Michael if you're comfortable with it, I just need to do that as a starting point.
I, I'm comfortable. There was one that came up today, somebody had asked, and I thought it was a thoughtful question, so I thought I'd add that tonight.
Okay. If you're comfortable with that, and we agree to a total number, say 10, is that too many? What I'll do is, is add the ones that I got, the new one from Michael and you two, and put together, maybe not everyone, and we can then put that on the agendas. I'm hoping we can start inviting, start interviewing these next week, actually.
So, if I may, Mr. Chairman, so the game plan is to have us each take a question or questions that we would ask in this session or forum?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not sure an arbitrary number, you could shoot for an arbitrary number, but I'm not sure that all questions are equal. Some of these things could be answered in two sentences, and others are going to require a thoughtful three to five-minute explanation. So, I mean, a couple of mine were pretty simple. We're in a town meeting, form of government. Have you ever been in a town meeting? So what's your role? That's not like a two-hour dissertation.
Yep.
Well, while I'm trying to avoid this debating this forever.
Yep.
So I'm hoping if I could put the questions that, that you guys give me, and you give me some authority, I'll put, I'll, I'll put together, say, 10 questions, and you, and we'll, you know, divvy them out, and we can ask the questions. So we can invite the candidates in and get going.
Yeah, that's fine.
Sooner or later.
Michael?
The question, I won't email you. The question that came up today was pertaining to knowledge on wastewater. So, given what we're up against, maybe that's a good question.
Don't, okay, I'll give you that one. Ed?
Do we have a, are we looking at a particular time to hold the interviews?
I would like to interview next week, and then possibly, I think, Ed, you'd mentioned to me prior, you know, just, not a decision next week, but we can interview them and have a time to think about it, maybe the week after that, make some, do something with it.
Yeah, I mean, if I could, I, I think as soon as we can get this.
I'd like you to start it.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I think, you know, if we could do it during, you know, not, not on Monday night, but some, someday, sometime in the days following next week, and then have, before launching into making a decision, have some time to review and do some reference checks, et cetera.
But there's no reason not to do this Monday night, right?
What?
To interview candidates.
It's important enough to have its own meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, you know, it all depended on what you were planning for Monday night.
I think it'd be tough to combine it with.
You know, if we don't have anything on the agenda for Monday night, sure, we could do Monday night.
I'll, I'll work with Joe on how busy the agenda is. If it's an open agenda, we'll move it ahead and do it Monday night. Michael?
Just one more comment. Larry, as you get extra questions and we put the list together, it seems that the last question on the list, which must have been one of yours, has been asked and answered in the, in the interview process with the committee.
Okay, yeah.
Seems a little, a little redundant, because we do have that answer, a very lengthy answer from them on that one.
That's a good point. I actually did that on purpose, thinking they answered it once, they could answer in front of, on the public forum.
Yep, that's fine with me.
But I don't object if, I'll take that, if, if we have better questions, I'll pull that off for that reason, but I, I did that on purpose for that reason.
Thank you, Larry.
It's also the sort of topic that I, I assuming we're going to give each of the candidates the time to sort of have, have, you know, their own sort of introduction, and given, given what's happening, if, if, I'd be surprised if nobody mentioned that.
Yeah. Okay. I'll, I'll, I'll work with Joe on how busy the agenda is. If we have, if it's not much going on, we'll try to do it. If not, we'll call a special meeting, but it's, I think it's better for the public participation that are used to Monday, if we can.
It's also.
Do it then.
Also, you know.
Timing of the candidates.
Timing on the candidates, if they're, if they're all available.
Yep.
Are we talking about in person, or are we talking about?
We're talking about in person.
Yeah. Yeah, because I would hate to hire somebody from a catalog.
Because I checked with, I think I mentioned last week, I checked with Megan, and we can, you know, we can bring them in at one time and do the social. Okay, well, if you're comfortable with that, we'll move ahead and try to get, try to get going. Thank you for, for sending these in to me. Next on the agenda is the public hearing, and it's a continuation of voter for the Irish Pub. I won't read the whole thing, but Joe, I guess I'll put it to you then to review this.
Certainly, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, you should have in front of you an updated document, just going through it now in the packet, and included comments that were offered by staff today that the board should be aware of. And, you know, as you said, it's a continuation from last week, and based on the board's direction last week, you were looking for additional narrative, you were looking for site plan as well as staff comments. I believe that we staff have accomplished that, and, and now at this point, for you to continue your hearing, to hear from the representatives of the Irish Pub, and of course, to hear from the residents that have weighed in on this. So I'm prepared to answer any questions about the packet, and then I would defer to the applicant for their presentation.
I know, I have a couple of questions on the packet, and I probably, my guess is others do too, but.
Sure.
I'd like to start first with the, your direction, and have Irish Pub present, and then hear from some of the others, and then we can.
Yeah.
We can comment on that, if that's okay with everyone. Irish Pub, Lisa, are you?
I am here, thank you. So we've, you know, so we're continuing to pursue having outdoor entertainment, and so looking for a license from 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM. I'll refer back to what Megan Eldridge said, is that, you know, the virus is spreading inside, and it, and we take that seriously. We're, we're, we're being super creative with our indoor business, but it's just not happening, and, and we want to move it outside. We did put together a site plan, we're trying to make it, you know, so it's pleasing to the eyes as people drive by. We're not going into, you know, the late hours. So we think that we put together a nice plan that will, you know, suit everyone. I, I don't know, if you have specific questions, I can, I can, I can talk about it. I don't know if, do you have a copy of the site planned, and what our, what our plans are?
We do.
Let me, well, okay, let me ask a question about the site plan then. The, I think you received, you, you talked to Amy, Conservation?
Yeah.
And, you know, with their regulations, you have to be no closer than 100 feet, you know, from wetlands, or 200 feet from the river. And there's a no-build area 60 feet from the wetland resource area in their language. From your, from your site plan, and your fence is, is considered a structure. I couldn't.
So we've seen, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I didn't see where the fence showed up on your site plan to, and I guess related question is, would that reduce the area and fewer tables? Might impact the noise issue as well.
Yeah. So we had approval to, to have, to, to, to serve people outside, and that was, that was approved several weeks ago. So with this new, the, the new application for the modification to the entertainment license, we were asked to give another site plan. So we did move the tables a little bit. We're trying to keep, obviously, we want to, it's, we're concerned, number one, about the safety of our customers and our staff. So we did put up, it's a, it's a fencing that can actually, it's like a snow, I call it beach fencing. It's called snow fencing, it's the, it's the vertical slats. You literally roll it up, roll it out, roll it in. It's not, it's a, it's a little cumbersome, but it's, you know, it's doable. So I did talk to Amy about that, so that's, that, that will go in and out on a daily basis, and, and I, I gotta be honest, we're not doing this every day. We're, we're one to two days a week, is what we're looking for. So, so it's going out, it's going, it's, we're rolling it out and rolling it in. And then the tent also is, we're putting it up and we're taking it down.
So you're saying Amy's determined it's not a structure?
She, so, yeah, so I spoke to her on Friday, and then I said that we can, I, you know, we, we gave her more information, and then this morning, I emailed her and said that we figured out a way to make it so that it's not a permanent structure. So realizing that. It wasn't never going to be a permanent structure, it was just, we were trying to put, honestly, trying to put flower boxes out and putting the stakes in the flower boxes, and so for us to carry the flower boxes in on Saturday, on, on Friday night, and then, you know, and then put them back out on Saturday, but that is a no-go according to Amy, and that's perfectly fine. So we're not going to do flower boxes. I was really just trying to make it aesthetically pleasing to customers driving by. So that's what the site plan looks like. We're not adding, we, when there's entertainment, we know there's a, there's a limit of 100, 100 people, and that includes the staff and the band. So that, we're not, we're not dropping, we don't know if we're going to get, we could get 40, you know, tables of two. So we're not, we're not, and we're not putting, you know, strangers together at a table. So we didn't change our, the number of tables, but we do know that it cannot go over 100 people, including staff and band.
Thank you. Steve?
What was it you were referencing, one to two days a week? What are you, what are you doing?
Sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm, we're not, I'm not asking to change the, I'm not asking, we're not going to go out into our parking lot and, and blow the neighborhood away for seven days a week. days a week, I promise you that. So I'm, I'm, I guess it's my, I don't, I'm, we're asking for the entertainment license on a daily basis, but my point is that we're just trying to, we're not even trying to make money, we're trying to stay afloat. So I'm trying to show you that we're reasonable and, and I understand if neighbors have concerns, but we're reasonable people and we try to be good neighbors.
So you think, you're feeling that you won't do this every day of the week?
Well, we will not do this every day of the week. I want the opportunity to do it, perhaps a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, but at this point, we don't have plans to do it on a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, but I don't want to be, we have to pay our bills, we don't have money to pay bills. So if we have to open to pay bills, we'll open, you know, I want to have the opportunity to open and pay bills. That's how bad it is.
Michael?
So Lisa.
I'm sorry, Steve, did I answer your question?
I'm good, thank you, Lisa.
So Lisa, with that said, if we excluded a couple of days a week, if we took Sundays and Mondays out, would that hurt you?
No.
Okay.
You could take, yeah, you could take, do you want Sunday, what about Sunday?
Leave Sunday.
If you could leave Sunday, I'm not sure about Sunday, if we could leave Sunday, it seems like a nice, you know, there's lots of people in the Cape on a Sunday and it's a family day. Could you take out, take away Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday?
Okay, just food for thought for the board as we deliberate. Thank you.
Larry, if I may, just procedurally, the other individual that's speaking should identify themselves and should try to be on camera.
That's my husband, sorry.
My name is Dan O'Neill, I just made a comment there and decided, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. We have no.
I'm a private, no, Larry.
Okay. Ed?
You, you have a tent located where the band is going to be, what size is a tent?
12 by 12.
12 by 12, and it's really.
It's a little pop-up.
It's a pop-up.
Sorry, again, I'm, it's a pop-up, it's not a tent, it's just a pop-up that you, it's put up and taken one in five minutes.
Do you, will it have sides and a back?
Right now, we don't have any sides. On the brick one we own at the moment, we don't have, we own the thing and we use it for little parties and things, so there is no side on, it probably would be a bad idea to put a side on the back and on two sides, that would be like a sound deadener if the music is playing, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
That would help, that would help a little bit. Plus, just as another comment, the band, as you can see from your site plan, the band is going to be faced out towards Route 28 and not towards the river where people, where people live behind.
Don, any?
I'm just, I'm just trying to weigh the, the concerns of the people over the concerns of the owner that they may not be able to go on if they don't get something.
If there's no one, no other from us then, let me ask if those people that wish to comment from your neighborhood. Scott, how do you play?
Yes, there were three requests, there's a Bob Coen, a Tom Dudek, and then Lisa.
Identify yourself.
I think Dudek was first. Hi, I'm Tom Dudek. Can you hear me and see me? I'm not technologically oriented.
Yes, we can.
Okay, that's great, success.
Lovely.
Thank you for the opportunity, basically, to share our perspective. My wife Bobby is here in the room with me. We obviously live in proximity to the Irish Pub and our observations, basically, are that in town and a variety of communities in Massachusetts, on Cape Cod and elsewhere, businesses have struggled with the repercussions of COVID and what you've had are restaurants that basically have, have looked at ways to expand outside, few tables on a sidewalk, expansion basically into grassy areas, et cetera. Here, if you look at this in the context of that, we have what has historically been a bar on Route 28, a very popular one over time. And what we're talking about, basically, is putting up 40 tables with 100 people serving liquor with amplified music at the gateway of the Herring River. And, and I understand as a balance, we want our businesses succeed in town, but I can't think of a worse place, basically, to do this. And, and my observation, basically, is that, that noise carries on the river. I hear it, basically, people talking in kayaks, which is, you know, that's the way it is. But here, what you're talking about is basically having amplified music with 100 people drinking outside, hopefully enjoying themselves, but it's going to be very disruptive both to the residents of the area and to anyone who likes, basically, the peace and tranquility of the river. So I would just look at this in the context of adding a few tables on a sidewalk and put this in context relative to the disruption that's going to occur in our community to the river. The final observation I have is that, that hopefully this is not setting a precedent if you decide to grant any of the lengthy list of things that are going on here on our riverfront. I mean, I understand the COVID, I understand business have been impacted, but the last thing we need, basically, is an outdoor entertainment venue in an environmentally sensitive area. Here, we're talking about within feet, basically, of the river. And frankly, I'm surprised that the conservation agent and commission isn't looking, basically, here for someone to put in a letter of intent so they can actually analyze what's going on here. I mean, this is not, this is an expansion of a business into an environmentally sensitive area and it should be looked at as such. So with that, I thank you, I understand you have tough decisions to make. I wish nothing but the best for the Irish Pub, but I think if you look at this in balance, the disruption to our community into the river far outweighs, basically, the, what's being asked for here and hopefully there's no precedent-setting nature of this because we don't want this in the future. So thank you.
Tom, I can respond to the precedent-setting nature fairly easily because this, we can do this because of the emergency decree based on the COVID-19 that will expire whenever we go on to phase four.
Yeah, I understand that, but, but there's a nose under the tent kind of thing. I was in business for a long, long time. Once there's a nose under the tent and, and there is a, a, a history of something being done, it's frequently allowed on a going-forward basis because, basically, people look at it as natural and to me, this is anything but natural on the river. So I understand the COVID thing, I understand the emergency declaration, I understand what other hoops one has to jump through, basically, to expand their entertainment and liquor license here in Massachusetts. But I would, I would never want to see this as a precedent because this, frankly, is, is wrong for the river and wrong for the residents who live on it.
Point taken. We can't, none of us know the future, so there you go.
So thank you again.
Thank you for your comments. I think, Scott, there's someone else who is, wishes to comment as well.
Maybe he said that Bob Coen's with him in the, in the room. If not, Mr. Coen, it's your turn to speak. Okay. Can you see me?
We can.
Indeed. Can you hear me, I guess?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, board members, I sent the board an email last week and had hoped it would be included in the packet, but I don't believe it was. So I'd like to go over the main points now and some additional ones as well. As I mentioned, I'm on the noise committee, but these are my views only, not the committee's. First off, having listened to Lisa of the Irish Pub last week, I have to say I feel bad, really bad for her and the Irish Pub situation. At the same time, though, I also feel bad for the West Harwich neighbors who've had to put up with a great deal of unwelcome noise in the past. I glanced at the Irish Pub's plan and it seems like they're willing to make an effort to be good neighbors. Putting a band under a tent would be a first in town and the willingness to monitor the noise shows their understanding and hopefully their good intentions. However, a three-piece band sounds like it's asking for trouble. I also note that some tables are about 100 feet from the band, away from the band, which might mean that noise levels are apt to be louder than for a more intimate arrangement. Also, if the Irish Pub eventually wants to go to 10:00 PM, then of course, Harwich and Tavern is going to want that too, which might create a new set of problems. However, all that being said, there's a fundamental problem with all of Harwich's outdoor entertainment licenses, which makes any new license difficult to support. In the late fall of 2016, there was a public hearing titled, in part, Adoption of Noise Bylaw Standard for Entertainment Licenses. The major outcome was a new outdoor entertainment license, which uses that noise bylaws 150-foot plain-the-audible standard. Unfortunately, however, while plain-the-audible is a defined term in the bylaw due to an apparent clerical error, that definition wasn't carried into the entertainment license, which is contained in the separate liquor license regulations. This left the term undefined. Partly as a result of this, plainly audible came to be loosely, variably, and unpredictably interpreted for outdoor entertainment and to this day, no one knows or agrees on its meaning. As can be imagined, this creates a number of problems. One, venue performers don't know how to, how loud they're allowed to be and because of this can't self-regulate. The Irish Pub can monitor noise levels all they want, but without an agreed-upon plainly audible definition, they won't know when they're exceeding the limit. Nothing definitions like saying, don't drive too fast, instead of saying, the speed limit's 55 on highway and 20 in school zones. Two, neighbors similarly don't know the threshold for reporting violations. Three, police officers have no clear, community-agreed-upon guidelines to know when to cite venues, putting them in a bind. Instead, subjective judgment prevails, resulting in inconsistent and unpredictable enforcement, which can encourage further non-compliance. Four, successful and fair prosecution by the town administrator, entertainment license violation hearings is made difficult. Five, interactions between the various parties becomes problematic as no one can agree on the basics. Six, in the absence of well-established limits, noise levels have grown. When one venue is allowed or gets away with louder levels, other venues are encouraged to do the same. Venues without outdoor entertainment, such as the Irish Pub, seek their own outdoor licenses in order to compete and the outdoor entertainment scene grows. As outdoor entertainment grows, what seems normal and reasonable changes over time. The town as a whole becomes used to the new levels. This can play into officers' judgments. Seven, ultimately, the 150-foot plain-the-audible standard that was originally agreed upon wasn't properly transcribed, allowing the meaning of what is plainly audible to erode and causing the safeguards residents were initially promised to be lost. I don't know if the town has legal liabilities here, but A, it created the problem when they dropped the plainly audible definition, B, I believe it continues to use the incorrect standard for enforcement, C, it continues to grant licenses with the incorrect standard, and D, it hasn't corrected the problem promptly. I'm not interested in any legal action, I don't mean this as a threat in the least. Still, the town appears to be in the wrong here and might be liable under some combination of mis-mal and or non-heasons. Whether or not the town has legal liabilities, however, I do believe it has a moral liability and a moral obligation to fix this. It's done real disservice to neighboring residents with what is now going on a four-year period. The incorrectly written license has become increasingly accepted by businesses, police officers, and outside visitors to our neighborhoods and should never have been. The fact is, noise violations aren't victimless. Similarly, the failure to properly identify a noise incident as a violation is also not victimless. Indeed, I'm sorry I'm going on so long, but I've got, I want to get to the end of this. Indeed, a number of people have lost significant enjoyment of their homes due to the noise. Some neighbors near Perks and the Port have had their homes become unlivable for four or more hours almost every evening, very hours in which most people want to get together with their families and enjoy their homes. Some of these neighbors have stopped or curtailed using their homes or portions of their homes. In effect, for these people, this has been a slow motion and improper taking by eminent domain. To a lesser extent, the same holds true for government, other residents in other areas of Harwich Port as well as for residents in West Harwich. All these people have found themselves at their wits' end with the noise. Some feel that noise is driving them out of town and seriously discuss leaving. And these are all people who, like everyone else in Harwich, love this town. Given all this, residents have a right to be checked with the town for having put them through so much trouble. West Harwich residents have a right to be wary of an unwelcoming of a new license holder, unwelcoming too. The town has let residents down repeatedly and has created an outsized outdoor entertainment scene cheap by jowl with residents and far keeping what is widely considered normal or reasonable comparable communities in this and neighboring states. The town has done this with little forethought, apparently accidentally, with a little concern and inadequate safeguards for residents. To a very significant, significant degree, much of the problem the residents have experienced can be attributed to the missing plainly audible definition, to the subsequent relaxed and improper application of 150-foot plain-the-audible standard. Harwich residents shouldn't have to go through all this. They should be able to be confident the town has their backs and looks out for their interests. Residents shouldn't have to repeatedly plead their case before this board, but should trust the board to look out for them. They shouldn't have to plead with officers about whether noise is plainly audible or not, when in fact it properly evaluated, it would be. Residents shouldn't have to work so hard for writing letters, attending meetings, and putting together petitions to have their voices heard. The residents shouldn't have to jump through hoops, making their case to the noise committee when it's obvious the town has screwed up. Despite of all the foregoing, I'm not suggesting outdoor entertainment be eliminated, rather that we try to strike a better balance between businesses and neighbors' interests. We're seeing that, for starters, the town might try simply using the outdoor entertainment license as originally intended four years ago, specifically with plainly audible definition as given in the noise bylaw. This might be an opportune time to try it out. Let me wrap up by saying that I understand that these are difficult times that I really feel for the Irish Pub. As a community, we should all come together and help those in need. So I don't want to say that you should deny the license, but I also don't want to say that you should grant it. It's not my right to invite people to the party at someone else's house, particularly on a nightly basis, and I'm not happy with the job the town has done inviting several loud parties to my backyard. So I don't feel it's my or any other outsider's place to invite a party of any type into West Harwich. Let Harwich residents, West Harwich residents decide. Nevertheless, I am asking that if you do grant this or any other outdoor entertainment license, that you include the noise bylaws, plainly audible definition in the license. I also ask that to the extent that licenses intended as temporary for the duration of the pandemic, that you require new public hearing of the business request a similar license next year. Finally, let me apologize for criticizing the town. I mean the criticism to be constructive. In fact, I appreciate very much all that the board, the police, the rest of the town's employees regularly do, particularly now during the pandemic. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. You certainly, in the end of that, you realize some of our dilemmas, how to reach a compromise that satisfies everyone and that's what we, and that's what we, that's our intent in all our discussions on how to move that forward. So I appreciate your comments. There's, I think there's a third person, Scott?
That was all I had emails from, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. I'll open it up to the board now for comments on the, Michael?
Should we close the public, public hearing?
Sure, we'll close the public hearing.
Is it okay if I, is it okay if I speak one more time? I had said in my email today, if you have questions, but it, I mean, could I address what has just been?
Please, no, close the public. Yes, go ahead.
So, you know, I, it is, it's a pandemic, it's COVID, it's kind, you know, like, it's different. So I, I understand, you know, I understand, I understand the frustration of the neighbors. We are super frustrated as well. I keep doing like the reality, here's the reality of it. We will go out of business. Where, I'm, I'm a taxpayer, I own a home down the street. Sometimes I actually, when I drive down Route 28, I see those red Xs and it, it really bums me out. I cannot prop that. We take care of that, that property. We try very hard to keep, you know, to keep it clean, keep the area clean, keep the river clean. Whimsy Boutique across the street, she's fabulous, she keeps me on my toes because she walks a dog there every day. She'll let me know when our trash, you know, we have a barrel down, down by the river, she lets me know when it needs to be emptied if I'm not around. We really try to do our part. I am afraid that we will go out of business. I'm not sure that's a, that's, that building will be sold in any hurry and I am afraid that a red X will be placed on that building as well and I don't know who will take care of the building at that point. So there may be some give and take that I think maybe, I want neighbors to think about that as well, as I am a neighbor. I live right down the street, in between Riverside and Belmont and one of those side streets. So I drive that, I drive Route 28 as well and those red Xs, they're bothersome. The 10:00 PM, we're no longer looking for 10:00 PM, that was a, when you, we own another restaurant in Wakefield. I would say sometimes as a restaurant owner, we feel, we're defeated and we get desperate. That 10:00 PM was me saying, maybe we can do it. I don't want it anymore, I don't want a 10:00 PM, we want an 8:00 PM. And I am thinking about the neighbors when I, when I, when I, when I talk about that. The three-piece band, forget it, we don't need a three-piece band. I'm going to tell you what we're doing with a three-piece band. August 1st is our annual road race. We have so many people emailing, what are you going to do, can you do anything? So my husband and his, our business partner Brendan O'Reilly, they're a three-piece band, they play every road race. Brendan plays the fiddle, the mandolin and the guitar, the other two play guitars, it's Irish music. And I was hoping to do some type of August 1st, some type of fundraiser for the Harwich Ambulance Fund. I put the three-piece band in there only specifically for that day, but I can take it out, they don't have to do it, we don't need a three-piece band. Frankly, they're probably the most mellow band, you know, they're really, they're, they're cool and they're fun, the neighbors may enjoy it because it's, it's an authentic Irish band, but we don't have to do that. So I don't know, you know, and this is COVID and, you know, we belong to the Mass Restaurant Association and I get ideas from them and, and, and they keep telling me that to keep, you know, keep fighting the fight because this is a pandemic, it's a global pandemic and we are impacted to the point we will go, go out of business. So I just leave.
Lisa, can I ask you your reaction to, there's been a couple of suggestions. There's been a couple of suggestions tonight. One is, I think Michael suggested, based on your discussions, possibly eliminate Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, so it's not the full week. The other comment, I think from Ed, was hanging side curtains on two sides to try to contain the reaction to that. And then I, I know in another situation in town, I think, Ed, you mentioned it, but we, we, they were able to handle the noise better by putting multiple speakers around rather than a couple of big speakers in front, so that, somebody mentioned the distance from the stage to the final, so that the noises, that might be another suggestion, but just trying to do whatever we can on the noise.
Yeah, that was easy. I think that the band, I mean, we have to, the band has to be 25 feet away from the first customer. We have such a huge spot, you know, space. I think maybe the drawing probably reflected more than 25 feet, but it certainly doesn't have to.
Michael?
Is Lisa done?
Are you, are you done now?
I don't want to cut her off.
Then we'll, let's move, let's close the public hearing then.
So I'm going to move that we close the public hearing.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Michael?
If I may. First, thank you, Lisa. Thanks for your explanation. And everything that I'm hearing from you is that you are willing to go the extra mile to try and make the neighbors as happy as you can. And I think it's important to put out there that one of the speakers said that you're, that you're competing. And I don't believe that you are competing. I believe that you're doing what you can do to try and save your business. So I think that that's important to note. With that, Larry, I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
So I move that we approve an outdoor entertainment license for Phoenix Park Inc., DBA Cape Cod Irish Pub, 126 Route 28, West Harwich, outside entertainment from 3:00 to 8:00 PM for Wednesday through Saturday.
Thursday through Saturday.
I'm approaching it. So my motion is that I'm approaching this somewhat with the compromise that we gave to the cladda or the former cladda. And we took Sundays out because I think a strong argument was made by the residents in West Harwich that they wanted their Sundays. So for me, the sense that I got from Lisa was maybe Sunday. But, you know, I think giving them Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday gives them a lot of latitude to have as many bands as they can get in there for those four days.
That's good, Mike. I think we jumped on, you might have made a mistake.
So that's my thought behind my motion.
Okay, good. Is there a second?
Well, I, I
Go ahead.
I'll second, but I have a question.
Okay.
Side curtains on the tent, right? Can we do that? And you said no three-piece band?
Yeah, I
Yeah, I mean, I have no problem with it on that day, but, you know, beyond that, we just want to be assured that there isn't that. So I think it needs to be in there.
Okay, Michael?
What I think, for, I think personally for us to condition that, I think we've heard from Lisa that I think that in the end, they have to comply with the noise bylaw. And in the end, if the police are called and they hear the music away, ultimately, it's going to come back before us, and we're going to have to take the license away. And everything that I've heard from Lisa so far has been that they are going to control this and monitor the sound. So we could condition, I guess, to no three-piece bands other than August 1st if, if the applicant, but certainly not one that I wanted to put on there or in my original motion.
Okay. Ed?
Yeah, earlier in your explanation of what you were doing, Lisa, you indicated that you were looking at one- and two-piece bands. And from that, I'm assuming you're, you're talking about people doing stringed instruments and singing? And I'm not sure she's hearing me.
Oh, no, sorry. I apologize. So, yeah, I mean, so my question, so I was agreeing with the conversation that if we're agreeing to a noise level, is a three-piece band okay? I mean, the three-piece band is Castle Reunion, the Irish band. So we want them to play on August 1st. I mean, do we have to just say they can only play on August 1st? They're, they're super enjoyable? And if, as long as we keep to the, to the same, the same, the noise level, the restrictions for noise level? So as far as the, as far as what instruments they play, this particular, yeah, three-piece band, it's all string instruments. But if we could just say up to a three-piece band, that would be, that would work for us. I'm going to give you, I just say it like it is. Guess what? When the owners are playing, it's a cheap band to play, to pay. So, you know, so that's another part of it, so.
So you're not talking about a band with a drum kit, bass guitarist, two lead guitarists, and three singers?
No rock.
Yeah, there's no, yeah, no. I mean, we do, we, my husband's going to come in there.
I'm sorry. No, no, yes, you're right. No rock bands. We, I'm one of the members of Castle Reunion. We've actually played in the pub for the last 30 years. Somebody probably even heard us play. And it's Brendan plays fiddle, I play a rhythm guitar, and there's, and Mike plays it, so. But we're not bringing no rock bands, no. The only two-piece that we might bring in would be, would be Mark Hennessy or somebody like that, but that's it. Nothing crazy.
Okay.
So you, so I guess I'm just worried that you would restrict the instruments. So could we just talk about restricting the noise level as opposed to the instruments?
Well, the noise level is restricted, Lisa. And as Michael pointed out, everyone is subject to that enforcement. The only reason I suggested it, Lisa, was because you had suggested it earlier. So I was trying to establish some, some give back that the residents can feel that we're, you know, we're, we're at least responding. So that's why I had brought up the three-piece, because you brought up the three-piece.
Yeah. Three-piece sounds alarming. The three places, it's alarming, yeah.
Okay. Ed, more?
Yeah, well, and I guess the other point that was brought up is the whole concept of this getting the nose under the tent for future precedent. But your expansion outside and your liquor license, liquor service outside is all done under the basis of the COVID emergency regulations. When those are rescinded, that all goes away. In the process, to be able to reestablish service, tables outside and liquor service outside, you would have to, one, amend your liquor license and go through the, into full hearing, both here and in Boston with that, and to serve, to set up tables on the parking lot outside in the future. After that goes away, you would need to completely go through Planning Commission site plan review process again. You know, so there are a number of hurdles that would prevent this ever being considered, getting a nose under the, under the tent. This is, this is simply a reaction to the, both social health and economic crisis we all find ourselves in.
Thank you, Ed. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, if that's the case, I was ready to pitch a final sentence to the motion, which would be, "This authority will expire at such time as the governor's relief from zoning ends." To be explicit that that's exactly what we're doing, it's not transcending any authority.
I don't think that's necessary, but
Well, if it's, if that's the intent, then say it.
Hold and suspend her.
Yeah, I mean, go for it. I'm not going to object to it, but if you want to do that.
And I just think, and I know what Don's going with that. And I'm, I'm fine with it, except for we've done that with no other license.
We've never had COVID before.
No, no, but we've approved outside stuff since COVID, and we didn't put that restriction on those licenses. So I agree with you in principle, but why didn't we do that with everybody else? And I think it just, it's the governor's order. So when it's over, it's over. The A, B, C, C rule will come back into effect.
I don't think that's in our hands. I think an emergency goes, you know, it goes.
Well, I do have another thing, unless that's on this.
It's just on what you said. I mean, I understand where Don's going with it, but Michael's correct. I mean, this is, all of them are subject to the same thing, as are we. So if there's, if there's a, you know, a desire to pursue the license after such time as this emergency is over, they're going to have to go through everything that Ed just said. And that's absolutely true. So, you know, the idea that it is a nose under the tent, that not, that's just not there. It's just not there.
Don, you had another comment?
I don't think we need it.
Yeah, this is directed to Lisa. I owned a seasonal business for 10 years on Lower County Road. And you know and I know, so I'm leading into a question here. You know and I know that days are worth different things in different months of the year. My question is, what's a Wednesday worth versus a Sunday once you get past Labor Day?
Nothing.
Oh, yeah, nothing.
I'm not inclined to vote for this motion because of the way it's constructed. If it went Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and we also approved a Sunday license so that we could really give you some relief, because Sunday, Sunday's a regional travel time for a weekend. After Labor Day, people come from Boston on a Friday. They stay until Sunday night, and then they leave generally. If we don't afford them that opportunity, the Wednesday doesn't mean anything. It's September 15th, because you're not going to make any money. There's not going to be anybody here. So again, that would be my desire. If we did this, if we did the Sunday, but I'm not going to vote for this.
Well, let's hear what Lisa has to say.
Yeah, we would like Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Sounds great, but I don't want you to all be surprised when you drive by on a Sunday and you don't see anything happening. We don't, we don't typically open on Sundays. There is, we do have to generate money, and we do have, you know, we do have our finances. We're looking to make a certain amount of money. And if we have to add Sundays to do that, we may. It would be nice to have the opportunity. Again, I want to be a good neighbor. I don't want to, I really want to be a good neighbor. I would love for our neighbors to come over and talk to us. I don't even know, I don't know who the neighbors are, you know, so that's
Lisa, the end of that is, you're okay was Wednesday through Saturday, then?
Yeah. And just so you know, we do typically close on Labor Day weekend. We do close the Sunday of Labor Day.
So we can, Michael?
And part of my motion really was the fact that basic math shows that it's only 28 days that we're talking about if we approve four days a week. As far as Sunday goes, I'll go back to the conversation that we had about the other restaurant with live entertainment in West Harwich. And the neighbors' biggest concern was Sundays. And to Don's point, I've owned small businesses for a long time as well. I get it. Lisa, at the beginning of the conversation, didn't seem like Sundays would bother. And I think that that's the biggest concession we could offer the neighbors, is to let them have a peaceful Sunday with their families, the ones that at least have complained to us this time and in the past.
Ed?
Yeah, and I guess, you know, my inclination to vote for this is based on, I think, the history of the Irish pub many, many years ago when, before they put in their air conditioning system, there were a lot of noise complaints. But they did invest greatly into the physical plant so they could operate indoors. And I don't know if we've had a noise complaint since those times. They keep it operational so that they can have the bands until closing time or near, near closing time without disturbing the neighborhood. As opposed to, you know, I spent many years along with you and Larry as we were going through the fight over the cladda. And, and the issue is, the folks who were then in charge of the cladda never would put in the money that they needed to, nor would they keep their promises. I think the Irish pub over the years has always kept their promise to be a good neighbor and to help them out in this time of, I think, need is something that we should do.
Before I call for a vote, Joe, would you care to weigh in?
Certainly. There's several questions that came up through the packet and staff materials that I'd like to ask just to have out there on the record. The application makes reference to outdoor on the deck, and the site plan doesn't show a deck. It shows an area that says banned. Is that what is meant by on the deck?
Lisa, go ahead.
Sorry, yeah, we, we did make some changes. Because we're, we, we can do the deck, but we moved it down onto the ground. It seems that the band playing at the same level as the customers makes more sense. Yeah, instead of the music going above the customers' heads, it seemed to make more sense to be lower. But again, we're super flexible with that. But that was the reason why we did that. And to keep it, you know, with our fencing that we're going to roll in and roll out to keep it safe.
No, thank you, Lisa. I think Joe was just asking to clarify the definition.
And then just one more question, based on the site plan. There's a number of tables that have been identified. Staff had asked the question, "How many seats do you expect to have at each table?"
So, so, so when we open, so, for example, on a Saturday, say we open at 3:00. So we, so we want to have probably 40 tables, but we can, there, there are going to be tables we're going to pull in and pull out. We don't want to say no to people because we have plenty of tables, right? So if we put the tables out there, we stop at 100 people, including the staff and including the band. So we put 40 tables down on the site plan because that is what we could go up to. But again, we wouldn't go over the 100 people limit. If we are open on outside without entertainment, then there is no limit of 100 people because the 100 people is for the performance. It's not for the, it's not for the area. Megan, I believe that's true. Megan wants to confirm. Megan, I believe that's true. Megan wants to confirm. It's not, it's, the 100 people is when there is a performance. Did I answer that question? We have it flexible, it can be flexible, right? So that's what a restaurant is. You know, a restaurant, often you move tables in, you move them out.
Let me see if I can clarify. Lisa, let me, the table will be set up for a maximum of four at each table? Could I say that?
You can sit, so we would have, my desire is to have.
But you would use up to, it'd be possibly four, but up to a maximum of 100 people?
Correct. What if we get all parties of two? You know, that's what happens in the restaurant business, right? You never know, you never know who's going to walk in, right? So I could have six people walk in and go to one table, and the next five parties walk in and could be parties of two. So I want to have enough tables to accommodate up to that limit.
No, I think we understand that, Lisa.
Megan's available.
Oh, Megan?
So, as I understand the rules, you're limited at a maximum of six people per table. And because of it being a performance, you're limited to 100 people, including the staff and the band. And how they want to arrange themselves, if somebody wants to sit at a table by themselves, they can do that. But you can't have more than 100 people there for the times when you have a performance.
Okay. Michael?
That was exactly my point. My point is, it's highly unlikely that they're going to get 40 tables of six. And it's up to Lisa to control the 100 number. And if she goes outside of the number, our new COVID compliance person visits, then she's going to be back before us. So Lisa knows it's 100 people maximum with staff and band.
Joe, is that, next question?
Yeah, that works for me. Like I said, the health director's queued up. But then beyond that, I would just ask the board if that's contingent upon the various staff recommendations that were in the packet. So it's indicated that the tent does need a permit from the building department. As Megan had put in her materials, that the same rules apply as with a restaurant, meaning only seated table service. So there'd be no bar service. Fire department looking to have the one-way drive open at all times. And police department looking to have the entertainment rules and the liquor license apply in this case.
Mike, I assume that's part of your motion?
That was all part of my motion, with the exception of the tent, because I don't believe we've made anyone else get a tent permit. And for a 12 by 12 pop-up that's going to be picked up and taken down, I think that's a bit, a bit over the top for this business to have to get a permit.
Okay.
So I would reject the permit.
Okay, but the rest of it were part of your motion? And Steve, I think you seconded that. You're okay?
I did.
If there's no other discussion then, I'll call for Joe.
Can I just ask if there was something that I misquoted, if the finance, excuse me, if the health director needs to correct or anything?
Megan, are we okay?
Yep, you guys are okay. Everything you said was exactly right, either restaurant rules or event rules, outdoor performance rules. So everything you said was correct.
Fantastic. We'll mark that down.
Could we, Larry, could we just have it rewritten again? Just, I think it's important to.
Michael, can you, you have to read the contingencies.
So I move that we approve the outdoor entertainment license for Phoenix Park, Inc., DBA Cape Cod Irish Pub, 126 Route 28, West Harwich, from 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM outside Wednesday through Saturday. And then just the mention of the department head notes, consistent with department head notes. Minus the permit fee for the tent.
Okay.
And again, I'll second that again.
Second that. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Two opposed?
No, I was, I was slow.
Okay, four to one.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thanks for the, Megan, your help, but obviously Lisa and the other people waiting in from the neighborhood will try to keep track of that.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the public hearing had three different items, which I think the board dispatched. Two of them, there was the request for 3:00 PM to 1:00 AM inside entertainment.
Michael?
If I could comment on that, we did already vote 3:00 PM to 1:00 AM the last time we voted the entertainment license for them. We had debate about 12 to 1, but we did already vote that.
Thank you.
So I don't think we need another motion.
I think that's right. Don?
But Mr. Chair, you have an active application for Sunday, which was separate from the other days. You either have to deny it or approve it.
Well, in that's the case, you want to move, Mike, we'll move ahead.
Move that we deny the Sunday, 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM outside entertainment license for Phoenix Park, Inc., DBA Cape Cod Irish Pub, 126 Route 28, West Harwich.
Second.
Other discussion? Now, all in favor?
Aye.
No, and one opposed, no, but we did cover that. Thank you, Don.
And I, again, was to deny, correct.
Does that seal this one, Joe?
I believe that completes everything on that matter.
Okay. Thank you all for attending.
Thank you all so much. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Moving next to contracts.
So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, in a moment, I'm going to ask the town engineer to present on this. But you can see in the packet material, what Griffin has outlined in the memorandum to me. What we're asking for is really an intergovernmental agreement between the town of Harwich and the University of Massachusetts at Dartmouth. And this is related to the Coldbrook project, specifically the CWMP Phase 2 for Coldbrook. I support the recommendation, but obviously expect that you might have questions. So I would turn it over to our town engineer to speak more fully to the project, if that's what the board's looking for.
Griffin?
Can you hear me?
We can.
Excellent. I'll keep this brief, but this is a follow-up to the presentation from a few weeks back where we had Brian Howes and some of the other folks from UMass Dartmouth and other agencies who are working on this project. They have worked, they're working through the design phase now. But one of the things that we're required to do, and it's for good reason, is to do some pre-construction monitoring. And what this will do for us will essentially give us a baseline for nutrients. Most importantly, nitrogen, because that's what, you know, our CWMP is aimed at removing. So this program will allow us to identify the influence nitrogen at a number of locations along the, I guess, corridor of this project. And then that information will be used in the future to compare to the post-construction monitoring. And then, you know, that'll be coupled together in a final report after three years of post-construction monitoring, which will be submitted to DEP and EPA for approval. And the hope is that, you know, based on the, as was presented a few weeks back, with the revised design, we're hoping that we can capture more nitrogen than the CWMP even anticipated, which we'll be able to take credit for because of this monitoring program. So this program is, the pre-construction, I'm keeping it separate from the post-construction just because of timeframes for contracts. The post-construction will be a three-year term, a three-year contract of which they'll be monitoring each of the three years. I have asked the team to give me that number, which is included in the memo here. The pre-construction monitoring is about $75,350, $370 to be exact. And then the post-construction is basically that times three plus a little bit for the final report. So basically, what I wanted to do is make sure I have a budget moving forward. And I made clear to the team that, you know, the town has appropriated $2 million total for this project, and the town will spend no more than $2 million for this project. The team acknowledged that, and, you know, we'll be keeping a log of this. To date, there are only two contracts that have been signed for this, and that total is about $154,800. So we've got, you know, $1.8 million left and change, and that's where the $75,000 will be deducted from. That's really it. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Okay, Michael?
I move that we approve the services agreement between the town of Harwich and the University of Massachusetts Dartmouth for technical support of the town of Harwich Bank Street Boggs Pre-Construction Baseline Monitoring Plan, $75,370, and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
Any other discussion?
I guess, to simplify it, we need to establish this baseline. So when we test afterwards, we can figure out how much of the nitrogen we've removed, and so we get credit for it. So we're just, without doing this step, there's no way to judge that, and we wouldn't get any credit at all.
Correct. And that turns into real dollars for the town, because as fewer numbers of properties, we have to worry about waste. Thank you, Ed. No other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to old business then. Discussion and possible vote to alternate sites for dates for the annual meeting. Joe, you want to bring us up on this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. And really, items A and B are obviously tied together. And I'll make reference to the packet materials. First, I want to apologize. What's missing in all of this is a cover memo from me to you all explaining what I'm asking you to engage in. And I hope that hasn't caused confusion in the community as far as the warrant document that was presented. However, as we've talked recently and with the creation of the Joint Finance Subcommittee, we're now rightfully turning our attention to our annual town meeting, which will occur in September of 2020 of this year. And feels like a special, but it's still our annual. This is also the time where I tell you all that we had, I had made assumptions and made recommendations to you all on actions to take. And tonight is the night that I tell you that I've checked my assumptions and need to make further recommendations. So specifically, the hope was that on Monday, September 28th, at about 7:00 PM, we would all be able to convene at the community center and have an annual town meeting that is a different time of year, but would feel like every other annual town meeting. And that is any number of individuals present, really no concerns or considerations. Well, as we've seen nationally, and in some cases in the region, we're not out of the pandemic yet, and it's entirely unlikely that we would be able to convene a town meeting under those assumptions at that time. So the intent of the first agenda item under this old business is to have a discussion with you all to offer some insights and recommendations. Decisions don't have to be made this evening, but it will have an impact on what we do going forward. That is namely that I think we need to recalibrate and look at an outdoor annual town meeting to accomplish having an annual town meeting in the fall. I spoke with the superintendent of the Montemoy School District, or connected by text, to say more accurately, and have asked about the availability and the use of the Montemoy High School football slash soccer field for the timeframe around that time. Now, I have spoken with the town clerk. I have not had yet an opportunity to speak with our moderator to see his availability. However, I know that our moderator and our council have dealt with town meetings of this sort. So this is really me trying to pump the brakes, tell everybody, I think we need to have a different discussion. We can start it tonight, maybe finish it next week, but I think we have to seriously consider doing an outdoor annual town meeting. I'm prepared to make a recommendation if the moderator, the clerk, and others are available. We could conceive of a town meeting, say, 10:00 AM, Saturday, September 26th, on the field. That could help the board then make later decisions on the warrant itself. I asked the town clerk if she was aware of any restrictions, if we had to have a rain date, and we used Sunday as a rain date. There are no such restrictions. However, we want to be mindful of, Sunday really means something to people. And my recommendation would be the rain date would be at 1:00 PM on Sunday, the 27th. And we could still leverage Monday, the 28th, of some capacity. But really, the story here tonight is, I do not think that we can accomplish the kind of town meeting that I was hoping back in June when I asked you to postpone until September 28th. And so that's the first item I want to put out there for the board. What you have in your packet is, first is the latest guidance, if you will, and I put air quotes around that. Guidance for town meetings to address COVID-19. It came, was published on June 11th of 2020. I first found that on the MMA's website and then found it on the state's website. I have some questions that I've reached out to council on, haven't heard back yet, but in fairness to council, I just reached out. But you can see on the first page, there are standards around attendance, and they're talking about the potential for town meetings to be remote participation and reduction of quorum. I don't know that either of those can apply right now, and I'm not suggesting those. What I'm suggesting is an outdoor town meeting first. But I wanted the board and the public to be aware of the guidance document. And I also wanted everyone to be aware of the updated warrant timeline for a late September town meeting.
Moving to the board. Comments, Steve?
Yeah, I was hopeful some time ago that we would have considered this quite a while ago. But I think we can use the example of the other towns that have done it and maybe learn a little bit from what they did and the successes and the difficulties that they had. One of the other areas that was suggested when we were discussing this some time ago, Joe, was the potential to use the field that's in the circle there in front of the school, which is a very large area that might be more accessible for power and other types of things. So that's something you might want to consider beyond the football field. But it's not surprising that we're arriving at the same conclusion that a number of towns already had done, so.
Michael?
I would just say so moved. I mean, I do think the football field would be a better venue because the astroturf and chairs, I think, would be better than the uneven ground. But the, and the lighting, if we go beyond how late this goes, especially if we do the rain date. So I'm all for it. I think we should make the decision tonight.
Ed?
Based on the moderator's availability.
Well, yeah, you know, I think doing an outdoor meeting makes all the sense in the world. And I think, you know, we just check and find out what availability is. As I understand it, we're not going to be having games in the fall, so the multipurpose fields should be available.
Superintendent confirmed it is available for use.
I do know, you know, if power is a concern, I do know there's a 600 amp three-phase power supply on the front lawn that the Cranberry Festival put in many years ago. So you could light up a small city with that, but I don't know. I don't think, I know there's power back on the football field also.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I hear you, and I would be inclined to do, to say, let's make a decision. But we've already voted on this several times. I kind of like to get a consensus that we all think that outdoors is a good idea, right? I do too, and I kind of thought that.
Well, I think what Joe's asking for tonight is to explore the options.
Yeah, that's why I'm saying I don't know that I would want to vote for a specific plan until we got it. But I think we all are shooting for that weekend outside.
I think if I'm understanding right, what Joe wants is a, at least consensus by us to explore the options.
Yeah.
And everyone's shaking their heads, so Joe has.
I'm with Steve. I thought it was going to come to this anyway.
And if I may, I had a chance to go over, check out the site today and talk to the town clerk. So I'll explore, obviously, the front of the building, the football field, and also behind the community center. My thinking on the football field is, if you see that area, the snack shack, for lack of a better word, is where the check-in could occur, and it allows for a nice flow of people from the parking lot to check in there. It has restroom facilities. And working from the bleachers, so if you look at the midfield, working from the bleachers across midfield to the scoreboard. The bleachers have 15 rows of benches in four sections. Now, I wouldn't recommend that we can have, you know, two to three people per bench, but there's an area there, and then you could progress out onto the astroturf and other places for stairs and all that, so. Excuse me, chairs. So it looks like it can accommodate. And again, at this point, I would not recommend a reduction in quorum. And that's why the next discussion would be on the warrant. I think it gives us a better opportunity to have a more robust town meeting as far as articles, for as much as the financial situation will allow us to.
Any other comments? If not, Don?
Yeah, just to bolster what Joe was saying, just our own collective experience, both here and elsewhere, with GoToMeeting, Zoom, and all those, it would be nightmarish to have like hundreds and hundreds of people queuing up on GoToMeeting to make a comment on an article. I can't imagine something being more cumbersome than that.
Agreed.
Okay, Joe, we'll leave it in your hands then to explore what our possibilities are.
And thank you for the consensus and direction. I appreciate it.
The other benefit of looking at the field, in addition to the restroom, that's also a snack shack facility. And at 10 o'clock in the morning, people may want a cup of coffee.
Or need, they want to sign people in there.
Okay, Joe, next item?
So the next item is something that would have occurred regardless of where we're having the town meeting. And that is to resume the discussion on a draft, and I say a draft, annual town meeting warrant. And what was included in the packet is the, really the first iteration. So I know that we had gone through different exercises in the hope of having a town meeting first on May 4th, and then a town meeting on June 22nd. And so what I'm asking for the board is for direction or consensus on how you would like me to proceed on a draft warrant. Mindful that we can now hopefully plan on an outdoor town meeting that's not going to be limiting to the number of people who could arrive. It's not going to be limiting to the amount of time that we can spend because we're outdoors and distanced. But really, to get back into the discussion of what kind of warrant we want to have at town meeting. And that, again, goes back to the other document that I included, which is the timeline. This timeline here is confirmed by council that because this board has not finalized a warrant, because this board has not closed the warrant process, paraphrasing council, this board has wide latitude as to what you want to do with the actual warrant itself. And so the deadlines that you can see in that additional sheet, and I can see the chairman of finance committees on our meeting this evening, of course, because that's where the bulk of the work is left. The board, obviously, will have to go through your warrant, make your recommendations. But then it would be time to hand over to the finance committee to do any number of public hearings, both to the capital plan proposed, as well as to the warrant itself with recommendations. So we have time, but we don't have a lot of time. And I would ask that we begin this process in earnest, starting tonight.
I'll look for any, I know, Joe, you said more robust. For me, I'd still like to keep it somewhat limited because it's not going to be comfortable on the football fields we're used to. And, you know, it does give us an opportunity to, you know, last, well, enough said.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just so the board understands, when I say more robust, I know we had a conversation about petitioned articles. So there's two quick statements I'd make on that. First, that we would have, I think, little backing to walk away from the petitioned articles that are in. But there's also no obligation to extend and add additional petitioned articles. So a robust warrant that I'm talking about would be including the previously submitted and vetted petitioned articles and whatever else the board feels appropriate to bring forward to town meeting.
And where I was coming from, the reverse of that is, is because of the budget constraints. And where I was coming from, the reverse of that is, is because of the budget constraints, we may want to postpone the capital budget items until the spring, if it, and some items that, you know, they're not urgent, non-financial, to be careful in those items going forward. But Steve?
The petition articles, it's not really even a debate. I think they.
They have to. We're asking them to do it as a favor. They don't have to.
Yeah. So I think we should accept that, that will be added back in. They will be added back in.
Anyone else have a comment? Joe, I, I have a question on the warrant article. When we put in the budget on that, actually, page nine on the warrant article. Since we're in the one-twelfth budget, and things, in September, we're still going to be in uncertain times, how's that move forward? Do we hold on a budget? Do we live by that if something changes going forward? Or what's the, just operationally, what's it all mean?
So I can't speak, I don't believe the finance director's on the line, and it's not fair for me to put her on the spot, but I could not speak to what the one-twelfth means, but the effect of town meeting would be to finalize an operating budget. That operating budget would go into effect after town meeting, so whatever we've done for July, August, September is in the books, that operating budget is then, from that point forward. If anything else happens that we need to revisit, we could do that at a special town meeting, if that's what you're getting to.
Okay. Ed, and then Don?
But the operating budget will include the money that we expended in the first three months.
I would expect so. What you see on page eight, that article, that motion, or that, excuse me, the language in the article will change, because that was not inclusive of what we've done so far with the one-twelfth.
Yeah.
So the normal language won't be there. It'll factor in what we're doing presently.
I was just trying to fully understand it, Don.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And therein lies the rub, and we had that discussion on that first joint meeting with FinCom. If, for some reason, we go along on the twelfth, 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 and something happens during the course of this, just be mindful of the fact that the adjustments that we'd have to make are, you'd have to get the whole amount reconciled with only nine months of the budget left to do it. So if there was some catastrophe of some sort, you only have three-quarters of the year left to recognize it and fix it.
Dana, you have any comments?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I thought this was a real good first stab at a budget, the warrant. It was very good. I went through it in detail. I would make one personal change, and that is to include the cemetery changes that they made, because it's a better law that they end up with than what they have on the books now. I dropped my objections on that one. But other than that, this was a real good first draft, and it would make to, you know, forty-two articles, maybe forty-five articles, it makes to a real good town meeting. I guess the one question we did discuss in the subcommittee was the use of reserves, and particularly the stabilization fund. If you use any stabilization funds as part of your motion on the actual budget, then it becomes a two-thirds vote instead of a, just a majority vote. So I know if I was a selectman, I would be looking at the possibility of having an article separate that you would fund some of the budget items with in there, just as a placeholder to have it for now. If, for some reason, we don't get free cash certified between now and the twenty-eighth, which, the system that causes us not to have free cash, then you're, right now, in the proposed budget, you have six hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars worth of free cash in the budget. I would argue that it's better to pay just that amount alone in stabilization funds and free up that free cash for other items, whether you use those other items as an adjustment in May, with a special within the annual, like we have normally done, or whether you use it to roll into free cash for the following year. It's a, just keeping your reserve. But the way to do that would be to have a separate article, only so you're not having a motion on the budget that requires a two-thirds vote. I just would go to get consent, but that's just my view of it.
Dana, I'm leaving that right now to your committee to come back to recommendations. I would, Joe, what's your recommendation? Can we pull out some articles to move ahead and start voting on?
Yeah, to that point, Mr. Chairman, what I'd like to do next week, you remember, you may remember, there was an effort in the late spring, or mid-spring, to look at a reduced warrant, if we were going to do it on June twenty-second, that was more strictly related to financial. So Elaine Banther, I had asked her to do that back then. She had done great work on that. So I'd like to bring that version forward next week as a discussion point.
At least we can scope out the overall warrant.
Correct. If memory serves correctly, it was, my directive was to focus on article, any article that did not have a financial implication, to take out and put to the side, to keep in the petitioned articles, and then anything that had a money or a dollar amount would be kept in for discussion by the board. So we have that ready to go for next week, if that's what the board would like to do.
Don, are you?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just the only one individual particular thing that I'd like to make sure we put to rest, because people are starting to notice it, in the revolving funds, can we just take out?
Pet burial?
Yeah. Can we take that out, so that nobody thinks we're doing an end-around of some sort? Because.
That was my comment.
Unless.
Got to it.
Unless of.
That was the apology at the beginning.
There might be a closeout amount, I don't know, but I mean, I would assume that anybody listening to this wants to know whether we're trying to bring it back again, and we're not.
I think, Joe, you have that point, and you're correct there.
Understood.
Okay, so I think we're in agreement, Joe. We'll take your advice and come back next week then with the.
A reduced warrant focus.
Reduced warrant.
Very good.
Okay?
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is a discussion and possible vote to authorize the interim town administrator to.
So I can make the discussion as.
This is a Montemoy Regional, this is a CEVAC article on the solar panels, so.
So I can make the discussion very brief, and just say that Matt and I reviewed all the documents, and the long story short is, if the project is to go forward, the Town of Harwich, it has to be between the parties involved in the Town of Harwich, not the school district. So to do that would be that recognition and acknowledgement document that Liz Argo had presented from the developer. However, meeting with council, if the board would direct me to work with council to correct that, we can get that done and get back either under my signature or back to the board. The effect for this memo is to have me work with council to get it done, so that it's corrected, so that it can go out to financing. So that's why we didn't want to necessarily have it come back next week, but I'll obviously defer to whatever the board wants to do.
Ed?
So when would it come back?
So if you do the motion and the memo, it would not come back to the board. If the board took an action separate from that, we would endeavor to get it back on the twenty-seventh, understanding that CEVAC and all the other parties said if it's not done by the end of July, it's not going to be done.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd move that we authorize the interim town administrator to execute on the town's behalf the recognition and acknowledgement agreement in substantially the same form as presented at this meeting, subject to further changes consistent therewith as determined by the interim town administrator in consultation with legal counsel.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second? Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just like with any other contract, if this were to pass, the final document will be presented to the board under the TA report.
Okay.
So the board will still see the final product.
Yeah.
No other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And one opposed. So four to one. Next on old business is a vote to approve the Assistant Town Administrator's step increase from M seven, step six, to step seven, with corresponding increased salary from one oh nine, three fifty-one to one twelve, oh eighty-six, retroactive to May twenty, which is one-year anniversary, and this falls with the, our personal bylaw, which we're required to follow. Any discussion?
So moved.
So moved. There a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Ed?
Just to comment, in normal times, if we have a town administrator, the town administrator would.
Would do this.
Would be doing the approval, not the Board of Selectmen, but in this case, we are filling in in that role.
Thank you, Ed. No other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
And last on the agenda, well, not last, we have discussions before, I guess, but the contract. Joe, you want to discuss?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As I mentioned before, about contracts, any time a contract that is twenty-five thousand dollars or less is signed, I present it to the board, so that the board has the information, and if you have any questions, I can answer them. You can see that there is one in there relative to the dump body truck, that's going to be for DPW. Funding was there, it was for sixteen thousand, eight seventy-five. Next was for GHD. The board may recall that this was an earlier presentation, and really what this ties to is both Pleasant Bay Watershed Alliance, and really just trying to, the town, to get an analysis of our flow commitments for both potential sewer projects. There were funds available under wastewater, and it's fifteen thousand dollars. And then the Tri-Tech Software Agreement, this is an updated program that the police department has on their, on their, sorry, I'm drawing a blank, it's radio and software equipment. And that dollar amount was, not readily apparent, seventeen thousand, eight hundred, eighty-three dollars and seventy-five cents.
Let me just, just in a couple sentences, put the wastewater monitoring, that in some context. The full commitments we have to chat them for Pleasant Bay Watershed is based on MEP data, Massachusetts Environmental data from about, time flies, it's maybe fifteen years ago now, and we now have better water data, which may change our full commitments. That leads us into the same discussion with D H Y. Our, the water data we have indicates, at least preliminarily, that we may be overestimating what we need, what our commitment may be. So this is, I think, money well spent to really look at the, what our commitments are, and hopefully possibly save money going forward and make the right decision. But Don?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, and for our benefit and for the public's benefit to hear this, this review is not being done by.
By a different firm.
Yeah, by the same firm that we have been using, so that it is truly an arm's-length distance that they're reviewing the data. They're actually generating that, or they're not just going to review it and approve it. So I mean, if anybody wants to feel better or more confident about it, that's why we're doing it this way.
Okay. Joe, thank you.
Thank you. I'll just close my report.
We'll move, actually, report moves to the selectmen's report. I'll start in the middle, Michael, we'll move.
I have no report.
Okay, Steve?
Um.
Ed?
Um, no.
Don?
Once again, Saturday was a great day for Harwich.
Yes, it was.
It was. And according off Cape Air State to north of Boston, ninety-nine degree temperature, I'm reminded how great it is to be here, it's in the eighties, but I have nothing reports of.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Second, all in favor?
Aye.